Tonight to the first new year of the neighborhood board in Kaulalua. And um, when do we, aren't we gonna, we're not gonna have our, our board meeting first? It's later. Yep. Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and start with uh, the city and state monthly reports. Honolulu Fire Department, please. Thank you.
Hello, I am firefighter Carvalho from Ha'ula Fire Station. So the statistics for, be like, be, um, provided below represent our confirmed number of incidents in this geographical area for the previous month. Uh, for more details on these incidents or related mapping information, you can visit our fire search tool on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the news and info tab. So the incident statistics for June of 2025, there were zero structure fires, four wildland brush fires, two nuisance fires, and one cooking fire. And other emergencies, uh, for medicals, we had forty-six motor vehicle collisions. We had four, and ocean rescues, there were two. Our fire safety tip for July 2025 is regarding wildland fire awareness, prevention, and preparedness. Wildland fires significantly threaten Hawaii's landscapes, wildlife, and communities. With dry conditions and daily activities increasing the risk, it's crucial to take proactive steps to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. Um, you can lighten the load. It's reduce the risk of ignition by maintaining your yard, cleaning your gutters to remove fuels. Clear, cool, and contain. Clear vegetation ten feet around campfires and barbecues, and keep a shovel and water nearby. Ensure fires are completely extinguished before leaving. Watch the spark. Ensure machinery such as chainsaws and weed trimmers and recreational vehicles that have operating spark arrestors that they're maintained regularly. Uh, for more information, you can visit these resources, which is the Honolulu Fire Department, at fire.honolulu.gov, the Department of Emergency Management at honolulu.gov/dem, or the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, hwm-o.org/lookout. And is there any questions?
Ken, go ahead and say your name.
Um, Ken Furukawa from Ha'ula. The report is for the three stations from Ka'ava, Ha'ula and Kahuku.
And Kahuku, yes. So all, all the statistics are all combined.
I was gonna ask if you have a, are we connected with the firewise program at all? Have you heard of that?
Um, I think our, what do you mean by, is the fire department connected to it?
Yes.
I'm not totally sure at what, at what level. Yeah, I'm not totally sure. I can get an answer for you and they can come back next month with it.
Okay.
Definitive answer. I don't wanna say too much.
Okay, we have um, at our board meeting coming up, we, we're gonna have um, a fire, someone from FireWise do a presentation. And if you want to participate in that, we would invite you, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely will follow up with that.
Okay. Say again? Um, Casey Connors, do you have a question?
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, one question, please.
I, I apologize. Um, I just was able to log on. Um, the last time you were here, I asked, um, well, for a community member, there was a report that someone was badly burned in La'ia. Um, and I didn't know if you were able to check on that or report on that.
Did anyone, I think, yeah, I think I remember. I think that was related to a um, a little kitchen fire at PCC, if I'm not mistaken. And it was one of the workers got a little um, singed, not too badly hurt, though.
So, so it wasn't several degrees of, of burns then?
Yeah, it was mostly, I believe it was mostly first degree. Maybe a little second, but it wasn't too bad.
Mahalo.
Aloha, Jacob, would you like to ask a question? Online? Jacob?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Okay, um, my question is, um, before and after, do you guys take usually, time you guys selves when you guys go to emergency calls? Like for instance, the DLT stated that their humps or their safety mitigation is not at fault for any type of fatalities. And if you guys do time yourself, like, oh, reporting the call, and there's several humps, how much do you guys actually time your distance before and after?
Yeah, so all of our, all of our responses are timed from the time the call comes through our dispatch till we receive the call at the station, till we leave the station, and as we respond until we reach our destination. Every one of those um, points are time stamped. And I, I believe, I don't know if we came out with a report about the speed humps yet, on the final result of the issue with those, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from people online? Or on the board? Are in present? Yes. Please say your name.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Lane, and I'm, uh, wanted to know if, how we could get uh, inspection in my community to help identify hazards so that we could make recommendations to landowners, how we can protect ourselves and become firewise.
I see. Um, just the general community, or you have a specific community you're referring to? Okay. Um, so our best is our, usually our um, like our community relations and fire prevention bureaus. Maybe might be a, a bigger help for that type of thing. I can make a note in here. Hopefully they can, is there a way they can reach out to you? Is there a? Yeah, could I get that? E L A. Okay. M E dot com.
Any other questions? We'll close the floor then, go on to, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate Honolulu Fire Department. Honolulu Police Department, are they online? Oh, you're here?
I'm online.
Yep.
Okay, please, please proceed. Thank you.
So I'm Officer Brandon Cruz, District Four Community Policing Team. Um, I have the stats for June. Uh, for burglaries, burglaries in Sector Four, we had zero, or we, we had one this year. As a, I mean, this month, as opposed to two in May. For car break-ins, we had zero. In May, we had three. Robberies, we had zero. May, we had one. Motor vehicle thefts, we had zero, with three in May. And general thefts, we had seven and four in May. That's our stats for June.
Okay, thank you very much. And board members, are there any questions? Yes, Calla? State your name.
Uh, Auntie Calla Miller, La'ia. I have a question because I have uh, someone that lives in La'ia, Ma'lo'a, that is part of the La'ia community. And um, her concern was a, a little concern over what happened over these past few months. And uh, it happened two months ago, and, and then the police department, she went to the police department to turn in, she had a camera of them entering her home, taking all of her things, especially her emergency things that cost over five thousand dollars. And so she had made the report, but as of today, she has not, they have not arrested. They already had the picture of them actually carrying the things out. One of them returned back to her house and asked, would you hire me to clean your yard? And forget about what I did. And he apologized, but the thing is, is that police department, our own police department. And my, my question is, how long does she have to wait? It's been almost three months. And she has gone to the police station, 'cause I was with her, 'cause I told her, maybe you need to go there and make a complaint. And she did. So my, my question is, we, she lives by herself. It's very dangerous because they entered her house. And there, there's cameras where they see them taking the things out. This happened almost two, three months ago. And as of today, she was told that they were gonna get arrested two days ago. Today, she see them walking up by her place again. So she's just wondering, should she go hire a lawyer? Or uh, is there something that's gonna help her? She is kinda nervous because she lives by herself. And, and, and I don't blame her. I told her that I would bring it up in the neighborhood board. Her name is Kathy Cole, and she's very, very nervous when she sees them. Now, they're, they're, they are homeless, and they're, they're staying at, at uh, Pounders Beach. And they, they know how to uh, camouflage their tent. And so during the daytime, it's just like there's nobody there, but they have their tent there. And so I'm just wondering how much more that she, what she has to do to um, to let the police department know how, how very important it is for her. She gets very, very nervous, and I can't blame her. So I'm just wondering if there's something that you can do? Her name is Kathy Cole. I didn't get the case number, but she has it. And I was gonna report to her to tell her that I did bring it up tonight. If you can follow up with that.
Okay, so there's a couple of things going on with that case. It is an active investigation. And I believe there's a couple detectives working on it. I did not hear about that follow-up. I don't know if she reported um, that they came back to the house. If he does come back, then, then call nine-one-one automa, that's first thing you do. Um, and then as far as the campsite at Pounders, um, we're gonna schedule that cleanup. We were able to hit up to um, Kokolaleo Beach Park a couple weeks ago. Um, I can't really add anything to that investigation, but I can assure you that one is still ongoing. I know the detectives are working on identifying those, those parties involved, but there's not much more I can say on that. But I know the case that you're talking about. I definitely do.
Thank you.
And that's one of those things is why we're gonna schedule that cleanup.
Any other questions from the board? From the community? One online? Casey Connors, go ahead.
Um, thank you again. I was also requested to ask this. Um, do you cover um, suicides? Because we are understanding from some BYU students that there was another, yet another suicide this summer? And if there's anything we can do about it, or do you know who does report that?
So um, there are um, services for um, students. Um, typically it's CARES Hawaii. They'll, they'll have a suicide hotline. Um, from our standpoint, we document those things typically after it happens. If the school is having a problem with that, they can reach out to our unit, Community Policing Team, and we can come and talk to students about it. But we would, obviously, we're not mental health experts, so would connect them with the right agencies to offer services. But as far as tracking, um, those would, you know, we'd have to go look into those stats. But I haven't heard of an uptick at BYU.
I have a question, officer, to follow up on that. Um, is it required that if there is a suicide, that that be um, reported to the police?
Um, typically, um, if there is a suicide, it'll be documented, but it's not a criminal case at that point, but there is documentation of it.
Thank you, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that-
So, I'm sorry, where do we find those stats then?
Wait a minute, Casey, I'm sorry, you're out of line.
I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that BYU does follow all the procedures, and they actually have their own mental health team. And, and they have been very much proactive in all of this. Um, and so it isn't like it's another as if one happened yesterday. They are well aware the family's been here. So I think BYU is handling that within the proper um, policies, procedures, and the best interest of, of everyone concerned. I just wanted to put that there.
I'm, I'm curious, is there um, is there, is reporting part of their regular procedures?
Yeah, and normally, um, and I know because I work um, in housing with, you know, the student. But anytime first responders are called, HPD comes along with HFD when they come to anything involving the students like that on campus. And so their, the protocol is followed. And then they, they not only use their own on-campus um, mental health staff, but they also, you know, go outside if needed.
Thank you, thank you. Any other community questions? Yes?
Sorry. Sorry, I, I glitched. I had a little bit of a signal delay there.
Oh, okay. Evelyn, you're first, and then Keith, oh.
Evelyn Lane, um, I wanted to, when you said, is there anything that you could do? Um, there's a number that um, has been developed for um, intense mental distress phone calls, and it's nine-eight-eight. I'm a facilitator for NAMI, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. We have a support group here, um, the fourth Thursday of every month at six o'clock for those who might need some help dealing with what's going on.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Um, no. Okay, next um, item on the agenda. Thank you very much, Police Department. We appreciate you. And United States Army, are you with us tonight to make a report? Anybody?
I'm so sorry, I lost it.
Last seven? Oh, okay. I will go ahead then, uh, to election of officers. We have a, a board meeting right here. And um, so I'm not sure how this is done.
Uh, so we're gonna be nominating for chairs, vice chair, secretary, secretary and treasurer. So for the chair, whenever we're on the chair section, so um, one person can either self-nominate or nominate who wants to be chair, and we'll technically run the whole meeting afterwards.
Are we allowed to nominate?
Oh yeah, you can allow to nominate or self-nominate yourself. Uh, no need second.
Could you briefly explain the positions and their responsibilities, please?
Uh, so for, uh, as a chair, you'll just be doing, you'll be running the meeting, of course. And you'll be creating the agendas that we have constantly every day. You'll get, you'll receive like emails from, uh, either from residents or from other board members requesting things to be put on the agenda, which you can, or you have to do. And yeah, that's mostly mainly it, let's say.
Then vice chair, secretary.
Oh, vice chair is just what happens, if, if the chair's not here, it'll be the vice chair who'll be leading the, the whole meeting. Uh, that's mainly the overall. Uh, secretary, uh, it's, you just would help with the minutes, and if, help uh, correct the minutes, help, yeah. And I do the minutes, but uh, we need like someone else to look at the minutes. So that's what they do. And for treasurer, there's, really, we don't have anything for that position. It's just, we just, we're required to have it, but it's just what happens if the secure, if the secretary is not in right now. So it's like, so the secretary is the last person in line if both the chair, vice chair, and the secretary are gone.
In the past, sometimes we have gotten money allocated to us as a board. So as, as the treasurer, you would keep track of that money and what we do with it and understand how we're supposed to use it. So I think that's correct. Okay, um, so we're looking at nominations for the chair, and um, uh, Calla, your hand was up first. Yes?
Um, I would like to nominate Dottie, Adet, if she don't mind accepting the nomination.
I, I'm gonna say, I, I'm gonna decline any nomination for the chair. I, I think this is a really important duty. And I have so much on my plate right now with um, being Executive Director of the Center and working with HUD on funding for the resilience hub. I feel like I just can't do all of that. And I would respectfully decline that nomination. Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Dottie.
Michael Epp has been nominated. Uh, any other nominations on the floor? Okay?
Um, can I, Honolulu, can I nominate? Uh, the representative, our representative, Honolulu?
Nominate the representative of Honolulu? Go ahead.
Kawi? No, you, I wanna-
She's nominating you.
Okay.
And so there's a nomination of Michael Epp. Do we, wanna take a vote?
Uh, so for the vote, uh, I'll call your name, and you just have to say the last name, Epp, if you vote for him, okay? Okay, this is, hey, Michael Epp? Yeah, yeah. Epp, okay, uh, Carol? Epp, okay? Kelly Pata?
Epp. Epp. Okay.
Um, Lund? Sorry, I was, I was, I was correct.
Epp.
Okay. Uh, Passy, she's here. Okay. Oh, she's, uh, I don't see her. Okay, uh, Schaefer?
Epp.
Okay. Ungah?
Epp.
Okay. Uh, Miller?
Epp.
Okay. Uh, Ben? Viola? Sorry. Does he say his name? Okay. And Weiss?
Epp.
Okay. Hey, Michael Epp is now the chair of the Neighborhood Board. You can pass the gavel on to, oh well, pass the gavel.
So now, um, well, thank you all for that photo confidence. You're all lovely. Um, uh, yeah, sure, no one else wants to do, no, this is good, sure. Happy to do it, happy to do it. Um, so um, vice chair, nominations for vice chair, Calla?
I'd like to nominate Wila Vandyola from La'ia.
Awesome. And uh, and she has to accept, is that right, the nomination? Would you like to accept or not?
I would like to.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Any more nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Sunny Ungah for vice chair. I would respectfully decline, for the same reasons, but busy, but yes.
Okay, awesome. Any other nominations? Okay, so I guess we're gonna do a roll call? Will you, will you be doing that? I don't have the list.
We got nominated? Sorry, I was, I was busy working. Oh, uh, Vandyola? Vandyola, okay. Okay, when I call your name, please say Vandyola. Uh, okay, this is. Okay, uh, Epp?
Vandyola.
Oh.
Vandyola.
Carol?
Vandyola.
Okay, uh, Kelly Pata?
Vandyola.
Um, Lund?
Vandyola.
Okay. Schaefer?
Vandyola.
Okay. Ungah?
Vandyola.
Okay. Miller? Okay. Viola, okay. Vandyola?
Vandyola.
And Weiss?
Vandyola.
Okay, Vandyola is now the vice chair.
Uh, and so we'll move on to secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary? Ben? Carolyn Fango?
I'd like to nominate Carolyn Fango.
Carolyn, will you uh, accept a nomination?
I am so grateful to be nominated, but I have to politely decline.
Carol has politely declined. Do we have any other nominations?
Um, I'd like to nominate Dottie, if you would consider. It's less-
Okay, Dottie has declined. Do we have any other nominations for secretary?
We nominate beautiful Leaware Kawi.
Kawi?
Respectfully decline.
We're gonna run out of board members if we're not careful here.
I'd like to nominate Allegra Lynn.
Allegra?
I, I accept.
Oh, wonderful.
Yay!
Thank you for that, Allegra. Okay, awesome. So um, Anson, if you can do the roll call?
Again, when I call your name, please say, uh, Lund, okay. Okay, Epp?
Um, Allegra.
Okay.
Lund.
Lund, oh. Okay, uh, Carol?
Lund.
Lund, okay. Kelly Pata?
Lund.
Okay, Lund?
Lund.
Okay, Passy? Oh wait, she's, uh, Schaefer?
Lund.
Okay. Ungah?
Lund.
Okay. Miller?
Lund.
Okay. Vandyola?
Lund.
Okay, and Weiss?
Lund.
Okay. Okay, uh, Lund is now the secretary.
And finally, we are going on to the, I guess titular role of treasurer. Um, I would like to nominate Ben.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll accept.
He'll accept. Awesome, awesome. No more. Do we have any other nominations? Ben has accepted. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, would you mind?
Okay, when I call your name, please say Schaefer. Okay? Uh, Epp?
Schaefer.
Okay. Um, Carol?
Schaefer.
Okay. Kelly Pata?
Schaefer.
Lund?
Schaefer.
Okay. Uh, Schaefer?
Schaefer.
Okay. Ungah?
Schaefer.
Miller?
Schaefer.
Okay, Vandyola?
Schaefer.
Weiss?
Schaefer.
Okay. Uh, Ben Schaefer is now the treasurer. Thank you, thank you, Ben.
Okay, my understanding now, Anson, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We, we have to go on to the next agenda item, um, about our procedures. And at the top of your agenda is a, is a description of our procedures. Um, so it's a good opportunity for us to think and reflect about the last year and what we felt worked process-wise and what didn't, and what we might want to adjust, uh, just to, to facilitate our meetings. Um, so, um, Anson, do I, need to go down to these A, B, C, D here? Determination of meeting date, time, location, and the format. Shall we just assume it's unchanged, same time each month? Any objection with the time or the location or the format? Go ahead, Ben.
The time schedule is six-thirty, right?
That's right.
It's not too bad if you're living out here, but for those who live in town, oh, those who work in town, it's sometimes a struggle to get back here on time. And, but it's easier for the people coming in from town who, oh, probably the same traffic you're going through anyway. But uh, you know, those that live in, those that work in town are, are gonna have a hard time.
Do we have any other discussion, or is this other people's experience?
I think our meetings go long enough as it is, and adding a later- I think our meetings go long enough as it is and adding a later starting time would even make it later. So I humbly suggest that we stay with the regular time.
Sorry, just a quick question. And we're mainly talking about at least the board members that, that can attend the meeting. I mean, is that what we're discussing, Ben?
We're talking about the time that the meeting starts.
Right, right. But what I'm saying is we're considering the availability of the board members primarily, like if they can attend at, at that time. Cause I agree that later would be harder. But, so I, I'm asking that because then I would like to hear if there's any board members here that have a hard time with the 6:30 start time.
Are there any board members that have a hard time with 6:30?
So I might be late. Just to let you know.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm bored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. So, so go ahead, Anson.
And I like the availability of the WebEx. So in the event that you're running late, you can just tune in on the WebEx online and then come in. But I do feel like 6:30 is a good time where people, a lot of people, not everybody, you know, get off of work and that's kind of the standard time for meetings in the evening, so.
I, I guess the only thing I would ask is if you're going to serve on the board, uh, come in person as often as you can, unless there's an extenuating circumstance, then, then, then it's understandable.
I've been on the board for, off and on for many years and I read the, the Sunshine Rules again, uh, last Saturday. It, they're very long and there's a lot of information there. And I believe that in our past couple of years, we have not really, um, followed our sunshine laws as we should have. It seems to me, and I welcome any of you to go read them, but I take this in the same vein of seriousness about this job as being a board member. Um, it's not just for our resume, it's for our cooliana, for our communities. And we're the only ones and the other people that come that are really called to step up for this. And if you're not prepared to come to a board meeting on a regular basis, I really discourage you from being a part of this board. The board is supposed to be here unless they are disabled by something, are sick. And I would say if you're sick, you can still show your face on the meeting because we have lots of people in the past who have not done that. And I believe to really take this seriously, you need to be here as much as possible in person. And we all get sick sometimes, right? But hey, let's, let's make it real.
So I, uh, I think what Dadi's proposing is, is that WebEx is really just for extenuating circumstances. You're sick or you're disabled. For the most part, you're, uh, as a board member, expected to be here. Is, is that fine with everyone? Okay.
Sorry, can I just say something? Cause being a newbie, I wasn't aware of the, the rules. I am gonna have to excuse myself to catch a flight, um, but I would like to participate via WebEx. So I'll be here as long as I can. But I do understand and I'm committed to coming in person moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, so going on to the next item, uh, board. Oh, any objections to what we proposed?
Sorry, are we also discussing location and other details of the meeting? Um, I did want to, um, suggest or propose, um, considering another location that might accommodate more people. I've, I've come to meetings probably within the last four or five months. And on some occasions, there's not enough parking and then it's dark and people are parked on the road and it seems like it's a safety issue. There's also not enough seating. Like right now, we have board members and maybe seating for comfortably six people. I know the room has been set up for a little more. So my concern is just the safety issue for people attending. Um, parking is, is usually, and I, I don't know, the, the meetings I've attended have generally been, uh, well-attended. And so I would just like to propose the possibility of considering another location that can accommodate more and then park more people. Just throwing it out there.
Can, can we have some discussion on that, please? Go ahead.
What site would you suggest as an alternate?
I understand Ha'ola Elementary Cafeteria has been an option. Um, I did reach out to the principal in anticipation that this might be discussed. Um, and she, um, told me to contact their vice principal who's, um, over the facilities. And so I haven't been able to contact, I didn't have enough time to contact him, but Ha'ola Elementary Cafeteria, I understand, has been used before.
We might want to check because my understanding, and maybe it's changed, uh, is there is always a charge for using the cafeteria space. And we don't really have a budget for that, I don't think, but we can check. Okay.
So in the past, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the proposal on the table here is to shift to the Ha'ola Cafeteria, um, uh, assuming we don't have to pay a, a fee. Um, Kelly, please go ahead.
So, um, so in the past, we used to meet at the Ha'ola Cafeteria. And, um, one of the reasons was because, uh, moving here was because we had to pay. So if we have to pay for that, does that come under? I mean, have other board members meet at the school?
And it's fabulous to have this look, but I understand the concern parking. And if we had more parking, we get more people.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Kelly.
Just a, a point of discussion. We did do that before. And let me tell you, it was, um, it was okay, but it was not okay. It, it, it's just, it just throws everything off because we were worried, oh, do we meet here or do we meet in Ha'ola? Do we meet in La'ya or do we meet in Ka'ava? So I, I think just one place is, is, is better than trying to meet. Maybe one, this might, we go here, this might, we go there. And, and, and so I really don't want to do that.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that, uh, I haven't heard a lot of objection to moving over to Ha'ola Elementary. Anson's going to check to see if that's something we can do feasibly. Is there, Ben, did you want us?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, bring up that, uh, if we know we're going to have controversial issues, that might be a great time to go to Ha'ola School. Tonight, nobody, hardly anybody's here. But, you know, when we have those times that we do throughout the year, then we might want to just switch over for those times so that we can accommodate the, the bigger crowds.
You know, we're, we're, I'm, I'm happy to do anything that works with the community. There is a way to set up more chairs here and set up this room a little differently. After the floods in 2020, we had sixty, seventy people in this room, believe it or not. And, um, I've got all their names still. And, and so, um, I, I don't know if there's air conditioning, just one factor. I don't know if there's air conditioning at Ha'ola Elementary. So that may be one factor to consider, um, and the cost. But we're happy to continue to provide this site through Ha'ola Community Center or, you know, go to wherever the board selects.
I think one of the good things about meeting in Ha'ola School is because it becomes more of a community oriented. And maybe people feel more secure that they're at Ha'ola School. And, you know, I mean, I think either way, but, um, you know, we've been meeting here for so long.
So what is the pleasure of the board here? Yeah, what, what?
I think it's pending review of the financials of the cost. And I think there is flexibility on maybe setting it up separately, so maybe next month, we can try and set it up so it, you know, it accommodates.
Accommodates more people.
Yeah, but then definitely pending review of how much it will cost.
Okay.
And if that's.
So we'll be meeting here next month. Anson will report on the availability of Ha'ola Elementary. Okay, so a motion, could someone make a motion to keep it the same until we get more information?
Make a motion that we keep it the same, you know?
Everyone in favor? Any second? Anyone, everyone in favor? Show of hands? Okay. All right, good.
Sorry, quick question. Um, the board is not a nonprofit. There's no specific status in that, the board itself, right? Okay, I'm, I'm just asking the, I'm in communication with them and they said if you're nonprofit, then there's no fee. But they're also going to check on, like, you know, because we're the, the Neighborhood Board, they'll also check what the fee. Yeah, yeah, okay. But I didn't know, so I just wanted to ask.
Okay, moving, moving on to the next item. Yeah. Okay. Okay, then moving on to the board recess schedule. So we're choosing the three months? Is that the idea that we're recessed? What, what is the current schedule? What was scheduled last year? December and June.
I'd like to keep the December, June, or July, uh, just because I feel like summertime, a lot of people are traveling in December, naturally busy time. So my proposal would be December, June, or July. I'm flexible depending on what the board likes.
Okay.
Sorry, and what was it that the current schedule was previously? It was June and December, just two. Okay.
Yeah. So is there a proposal to keep it the same? Yeah, any second.
So would we consider, were you saying, um, Sunny, June and July and then December or June or July? Okay, got it.
So essentially keep it the same.
I'm sticking to motion.
Second, all in favors, raise your hands. Aye, okay, great. Going on to, uh, rules of speaking and time limits. Again, this is a good time to reflect upon the last year for those who are board members to see whether we need to change anything in terms of speaking limits or, or, um, any other rules of engagement.
I'd like to suggest that we have a hard time closing down this board meeting. And, uh, I think we need some rules to prohibit that ongoing stuff. So I would, you know, we've had, um, some people ask thirty-nine to forty questions a night. And that makes our meeting a whole hour longer. And I think it's not necessary sometimes. So I'd like to ask, um, everyone to say that we should really enforce. Sometimes we have the rules, but we don't enforce them. We should really enforce the rules we set up. And we limit questions to the topic that's being discussed. They, people should not go on to three or four other topics. Um, and we should limit our speakers to their time limits. If, if the, um, I can't remember now, but if, if there is a presentation and it's supposed to be eight minutes, it needs to be eight minutes. And I think we need to list, uh, limit the discussion time if we can because many times our discussion time goes way over. You know, it's double or triple the amount of time. So, um, these are just some general suggestions, um, that I, I have from sitting on the board. Kelly's agreeing with me a little bit there. So, um, I, I don't know if we have to change a lot of the language. I think we need to primarily change our, uh, to follow our own rules. So.
Um, I, I wanted to see if we could get like a timer that shows the time. And also online, I don't know if it's possible to put a timer online as well. Um, you cannot. Oh, okay, okay. But anyways, if we had a timer, I think that'll help, you know, us be a little bit more conscientious about the time limit.
I can see.
Okay.
Sorry, if it's online, right, because I like that idea about the, the timer online, but, um, even if the timer's here, then, you know, it's being, uh, streamed, right? Then it, it'll show it on the screen.
Okay. Allegra?
Um, I was just going to suggest, I have been here a few times when I've just seen, yeah, the same person, the same few people get up over and over. And maybe you could li, I mean, just putting this out there, could you limit a person's, like, maybe they can give three questions or like two questions, you know, whatever, I don't know. But put a limit of like, oh, you've already had three questions, you're going to have to wait till next time to chime in again, just because. I don't know if you can do that.
I, I have a feeling, yeah, I have a feeling that. Yeah.
Or perhaps you could submit your question in writing so that you're not taking up that time and it could be, you know, the. Yeah, yeah. So, so.
I, 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 if, if I can just comment, I think one thing we can do is just ask people to be respectful of everyone else's time. So if one individual is asking twenty, thirty questions, that is really impacting the ability for other people to participate and other people to feel like they want to participate. So, so perhaps what people can do, if, if, if they, they have a lot of interests, just choose two or three things that you really feel passionately about and maybe go deep with that. You know, um, so, so, and I think all we can do is just make that request. I think Anson has pointed out freedom of speech issues. We can't stop that. But we do ask people to be respectful and we can remind them to be respectful.
Sometimes our regular speakers go way over time too, especially politicians. And I don't think that's necessary. This is not a place to be a politician. You answer the questions that are brought up or give your report and make it quick. You know, it's, it's just abuse sometimes.
Go ahead, Ben.
You know what I've done in the past is, uh, when I was on the planning commission, any view with my job, is that I requested that all of the, um, reports come in early, six, oh, you know, just like the, it's like this week coming in. And everybody gets a chance to read what the reports are. I'm talking about everybody in the list. And then so whatever they're going to give is just the updated part of that report. They're not giving the whole report. They're just giving, it's going to be part of this, attached to this, and we get to read all of that things ahead of time. And when we come to this meeting, hopefully the community gets to read it too. And when we come to this meeting, we're, we're just trying to, if there's no other changes, then we're going to, we want to move on. If there's any questions, does that work? Would that work?
Oh, no, the, about the reporting thing. Well, I, I don't have, mostly will be if I was to record.
My only concern with that, Ben, is I think people have different learning styles. You know, so I think some people are not as much and, you know, they, they may, they may not take the time to do it or they're, or they just don't learn that way so well. So, so I, you know, I, I think maybe if we just are really careful about enforcing our time limits and, and, uh, and, and ask people to be respectful in terms of how much time they take up totally in the course of the meeting, but that would be my suggestion.
Who, sorry, whose job would it be to like enforce?
The Chair.
So for you, it would be mostly on you?
It would be mostly on me, yeah. Which actually I, I'm, I'm pretty okay. Yeah, no, not excited, but I'm okay at it.
And it's, it's good. It's like the Vice Chair helps with that timekeeping thing too. Because lots, a lot of the time the Chair is too busy with managing the meeting.
Okay, any other discussion on this? I'm not hearing any motion. We're not going to change anything is what it sounds like, but we just are committing ourselves to be a little bit better at managing this. Is that right? Okay. And no other discussion? So we're not going to change the time limits or?
Well, what about the time limits of the presentations in general? Um, right now they're eight minutes. I, I don't see the information here. I think we should go for like five or six. Five. All in favor of five, say aye. Okay.
First, is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion. Who would like to second? Oh, is there any? Oh, is there any, uh, second?
And sorry, we're clarifying, it's five minutes we're seeing here, right?
That's right, is that a, any discussion? Everyone's okay with that?
I'll go second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye, or raise your hands, okay, five minutes it is now.
We have a discussion at that point.
Is that right? Okay, like, I'm new at this, okay. So, so, any discussion?
I just wanted to bring up one point, is, um, if the pres- the guys who are doing the presentation, if they can do their report and send it in there, that we would have those things in, on hand, how about that? Would that work? We should on a stream ti- uh, timed on you.
You like, that would be a good suggestion for people, but maybe not a requirement?
We, we.
Like, to send out a flyer with their points on it, maybe, or something?
I think that would be fair to let the presenters know that this is the time limit, and it will be enforced, and we recommend that you put together a draft, or, or just an overview of your presentation, so that people can see that and read that, yes.
And if they have things that won't fit into the five minutes, they can submit that in advance as well, to be reviewed?
It's on our Google Drive.
Okay, all right, um, so I don't think we're, we, we're done, and now, do we say aye? We did aye already, okay. Everyone in favor of bringing it down to five minutes, please say aye. There we go, thank you. All right. Um, formation of committees. Anything? Okay, uh, so formation of committees, do we want to make any uh, changes to the configuration of our committees?
We have new board members, so does, do our new board members have any um, committees that they would like to be a part of? Maybe we can listen to their, um, input?
Um, Carol?
Yes. I know that both Wila and I are interested in being in the food security committee, food security committee, and Wila's also interested in health, human service, and how housing.
But I can remove myself from the housing.
Okay, and Wila would like to be, and she's gonna jump on WebEx.
Okay, so, so food security is Carol, and who again, I'm sorry? Okay.
Wila.
Wila, and then, uh,
Also.
Sunny's removing herself from housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just Wila. I'd be interested in food security and um, community emergency preparedness as well.
Sunny, uh, you, you said from housing, you mean planning and permitting, is that what you were referring to?
Can remove me from the health, human service, and housing.
And housing chair, oh, there we go, yeah, okay, that's right.
I can stay on the parks and ride.
Okay, maybe we should just go down the list here, right, so crime and neighborhood watch?
No one's on, no one's there?
I'm sorry?
No one's on that, sorry, crime and.
No one's on that. She's gone.
Okay.
Is this a committee we want to keep, and if we do want to keep it, um, we need someone to chair it?
Do you know what that committee was composed of prior to? Okay, and I would assume they work in conjunction with the HPD and HFD and?
Usually communities create their own neighborhood watch, it's really coordinating with them to help with the.
Something.
And with HPD and.
Be interesting, okay, 'cause I'm trying to nominate somebody who's not here, but I just, you know, I'm just checking, but I, if it's okay, but, yeah. I would like to add my name to the, um, emergency preparedness with Dottie.
Okay, so, uh, starting with crime and neighborhood watch, do we, we don't have anybody for that?
Not yet, she's not here.
Okay, so we'll revisit it next meeting, okay. All right, community resilience, emergency preparedness, the current chair is Kelly Paddock?
Yeah.
Uh, is there anybody else would like to join that?
Oh, I'd like to join Dottie on the emergency preparedness, yeah.
Anybody else?
Can, can you, can you join as many as you want?
Uh, yeah, why not?
Um, I, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll join that one as well, like.
Okay. So. Allegra's gonna join, community resilience, anybody else? For community resilience and emergency preparedness? Okay, moving on to the next committee, food security. We don't, okay, Carol?
I'll.
You're gonna chair that?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I also join that?
Allegra would like to join that, anybody else? Ben? Not right now, okay.
And Wila.
So we have Allegra and Carol, and who else? And Wila, okay, so we got a good committee there, okay, uh, moving on to planning and permitting.
Dang, I can't get off of the, of the emergency preparedness if you want me to join you on planning and permitting. Actually, there's some people not here, so.
Uh, I, well, I don't think we have anybody right now, who's, who's, anybody willing to chair that? No.
Oh, here.
I'm not.
Can I be?
A lowly number.
I'll, I'll change. Uh.
Planning and permitting, will you be chairing that, Carol?
Wait a minute, maybe we can have Allegra or Wila chair the food security, and I'll jump to DPP.
Yeah, I can chair food security.
Thanks, Allegra.
And then you're gonna switch to planning and permitting?
Okay, I hope you're getting all this, Anson. All right. Um, planning and permitting is a chair, Carol, and, uh, I'll, I'll sit on it, Carol, with you as a member.
I'll sit on it too.
Okay.
And, so me and Ben. Okay, moving on to health and human services and housing. Do we have a chair?
Wila wants to be on that committee, I'm not sure, she should be joining WebEx, so I don't know.
We've, we're.
Yes, I am, I'm here, I agree, I do wanna join that committee. Okay, do you wanna be the chair?
Who would like to chair it? Wila, would you like to chair it?
Is there anyone else on the committee, and who was the previous chair?
I'll be on the, I can be on the committee as well.
So Allegra's gonna join it as well.
Oh, I, I was, but because of the interest, I could be off, I believe Atalina would be interested in staying on this committee.
Yeah, Kella, you, you, you're on the, you're on that committee too, are you gonna remain on it? No, so we're dropping, we're dropping Kella from health, human services, and housing.
So right now, it's myself, Allegra, and Atalina?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. And Wila, are you, you wanting to chair it?
Um, I'm fine to chair it.
Okay, awesome. And then cultural and arts, chair, Auntie Kella Miller. Culture and arts committee? You'll be the chair, and I'm on that too, and Atalina. And Ben's on it, and, and Atalina's on it. Okay? Anybody else? Ben, you wanna chair? Oh, okay, and then parks and recreation, chair currently is Sunny Ungar and Atalina. You okay, Sunny, you wanna stick with that, and Atalina's gonna stay on that? Okay. Um, so I think, oh, go ahead, Kella wants to join that as well? Okay, so Kella's gonna join as well, okay. I mean, uh, one thing I did notice in my last term is that very few of these committees actually met and did much of anything, I think, I think, I think there were maybe two or three out of the five or six, so I think maybe that's something we wanna think about, is, is, you know, are, if, if, what are they gonna take on, and, and how are they actually gonna contribute to the work of the board, go ahead, Ben.
So chair, uh, I would like to recommend, um, a transportation committee for the roads, the buses, um, you know, the erosion, uh, something to do that effect, where, where we're constantly being updated, and, or trying to make sure that DOT and the bus and everything else are do, helping us to get, and I'll share that.
Okay, you're proposing starting, is, is, is that something one of the existing committees might reasonably take on, no? Okay.
I'll share that.
Okay, so, uh, so Ben has proposed the transportation committee that he will chair. Would anybody?
I second, and I'll help.
Anybody else would like to serve? I thought what we would do at the end of this is just approve the whole, approve the whole roster. So, um, so Carol is gonna be on that committee as well?
Yeah.
Okay. And so will Sunny. Okay, so we have a new committee, Anson. All right, and, um, so I, would someone like to make a motion to propose the committee membership and chairs and configuration that we discussed? Thank you.
Second.
Room, uh, could we leave room for the?
Those who are excellent.
Yeah, to, yeah, and add on.
Right, right, so we will, we'll revisit it next meeting for some additions and, and, and changes, and that's fine. Okay, and, uh, any discussion? Go ahead.
Actually, I have not, um, joined any committees, and, um, I would indeed like to be part of community resilience, emergency preparedness.
Okay, awesome.
The vice there.
Awesome.
And also the transportation committee with, um.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, Carol, were you gonna say something?
I know, that's great.
Okay, so, so we have a motion to approve all of these.
Motion to.
In a second, uh, all in favor, say aye? Okay, awesome, done. So we have, um, finished our convening procedures, congratulations, everybody. Um, moving on to government reports, um, starting with, uh, Mayor Blangiardi's office, Kat, are you on the line?
I am here, good evening, everybody.
Looking forward to hearing from you.
Yes, looking forward to working with all of you, nice to meet all the new board members, um, I'm gonna start off with this month's highlights from mayor's newsletter, there are five, and then I have four questions from last month, uh, and I'll, I'll answer it. Starting with mayor's newsletter, um, highlight one, the city begins an eighty-acre master planning effort for the Ibele Kapalama sub corridor. Two, Mayor Blangiardi signs a trio of bills into law designed to help increase public safety, especially along the Leward Coast. Three, the mayor's office of culture and the arts helps unveil three new art installations as part of the Wahipana storied places public art project. Four, entrepreneurs along the Y and I coast begin the Idea2Biz incubator program sponsored by the Office of Economic Refinalization, and five, long lines and wait times, no more. The city brings driver's license, learner's permits, tests online with no appointments needed. The July twenty twenty-five edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online, and I will drop the link to the chat. The first question was whether there was any discussion about the feasibility of allowing some vacation rentals to be legal for taxpaying residents. DPP reports, at this time, DPP is not aware of any ongoing discussions about legalizing vacation rentals for taxpaying residents. The priority remains on enforcing existing regulations to protect residential communities and uphold current ordinances. The second question was about whether DPP has done anything to make sure that illegal vacation rental fines are being collected. Resident Connors claims that DPP has assessed thirty million dollars in fines against illegal vacation rentals, but only collected one million. DPP reports, the DPP continues to regulate short-term rentals in accordance with chapter twenty-one of the revised ordinances of Honolulu as amended by ordinance twenty-two dash seven approved on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The DPP imposes civil fines on individuals who violate this law and record the fines as an administrative lien on their property if the fine is not paid. Third, um, a resident requested that the shoreline at Turtle Bay be reevaluated. The Turtle Bay project hasn't changed since twenty thirteen, but already hasn't taken into consideration the potential erosion of the shoreline. DPP reports, the project received certified shoreline surveys for Lot fifteen in twenty twenty-one and Lot thirteen and fourteen in twenty twenty-three. According to the building permit plans, the project complies with the shoreline setback requirements. Resolution number eighty-six dash three zero eight, which approved the special management area permit and shoreline setback variance for Turtle Bay Resort, placed conditions to increase the setback of structures to be three hundred feet from the shoreline. Structures between one hundred and three hundred feet from the shoreline are subject to design review and approval by DPP. The resolution took extra precaution to prevent impacts to shoreline by increasing the shoreline setback by more than what would be allowed today. Finally, the last question was whether there would be a revised carrying study or evacuation study for Kamihameha Highway, particularly with the increased residency due to the Turtle Bay and La Ya duplex slash multiplex project. The Department of Emergency Management replies that they do not currently have plans to conduct a carrying capacity or evac- evacuation study. They have reached out to, to the State Department of Transportation to make that, the same inquiry, um, to see if they have anything in the plans, but they have not received a response yet. So those were the questions I received last month, happy to take any questions this month, and I will report back with the answers.
Thank you, Kat. Do we have any questions from board members? Any board members online? Do we have any questions from the community who was present? Any? Any question online, Casey?
Yes, thank you, Kat, um, does the Department of Emergency Management have any clear map of, um, the nineteen forty-six and other tsunamis? When I look at it, it said Kohuku was under twenty-six feet of water, and, um, I wanna know if that's correct or not, and, um, if they have looked at, um, Barbara Keating Hensley's, uh, study of, she was the head of the World Tsunami, uh, Institute Society, and she said Kohuku there shouldn't be anything, um, built on that area, have they looked at that study? And, um, secondly, the, um, on the vacation rentals, recently on Hawaii Public Radio, a former, um, DBED executive, Rick Egg, said there were ten thousand illegal vacation rentals, um, in Oahu, and that would be a quarter of the, um, of the, the lodging for tourists, is that correct? Um, thank you if you can, um, clarify that last statistic too, thank you. Is it, it's, uh, we, we have a housing crisis here, mahalo.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Councilman Matt Wire's office. We have a representative from Matt Wire's office. Chelsea, are you here? Hi, Chelsea. Please go ahead, you're muted right now. Chelsea, you're still muted.
Press the space bar?
Oh, I see. Um, maybe what we can do is we will go on to, um, Representative Congressman Jill Takuta's office, and we'll come back to Chelsea after, maybe we figure out the, the, uh, so, so do we have a representative from Congressman Jill Takuta's office? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to Director of Communications and Engagement, um, Erica, uh, from the, uh, governor's office? Not here today, okay, then moving on to, um, Senator Brenton Awa, or their staffer. Do we have any representatives from there? Okay, so then, no?
Oh.
Do we have, oh, there we go, Elizabeth. Uh, Elizabeth, go, go ahead. Oh, we can't hear her.
Same thing with the others.
They have to unmute it.
Yeah, they have to, no, well, they, she's already unmuted, but can't hear her for her.
For some reason, others, we, we can't hear you. Um, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna go to Sean Quinlan's office, and then we'll go back and check with, uh, check with Chelsea and Elizabeth, so, um, anybody representing Sean Quinlan here today? Okay, um. Okay, let's, let's do it, let's just do a brief recess while we figure out the technology.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so I, I
Wonderful.
Just logged on to my phone, um, you couldn't hear me when I was on my laptop.
And, and Chelsea, maybe that's a strategy, if you're having trouble unmuting, if you can call in. But Elizabeth, go ahead.
Okay, hi, everyone, um, is there an echo?
Yeah, you're gonna have to. Yeah, you're gonna have to, um, turn off. Turn off the microphone on your laptop. It's on your phone.
Okay, what about now?
Okay, that's good.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth.
We're, uh, we're off of recess. Sorry. I'll, I'll get this answered eventually. Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Tavake. I am Senator Wa's office manager, and I'll be giving the update on behalf of Senator Brenton Awa. Um, congratulations, by the way, to all new board members and all returning board members and all new officers. Um, just a quick report this evening, just a couple of things. Firstly, something that Senator Wa's been working on ever since he's been in office. Some of you may have already heard or not heard about the news on the federal level of the U.S. Department of Agriculture announcing that Chinese nationals and other foreign adversaries will no longer be allowed to purchase farmland in the United States. As you may or may not know, Senator Wa has been advocating in the legislature with several legislation on trying to prevent foreigners and on real property tax and purchasing real property tax. And most recently, on agriculture land. And unfortunately, we didn't get too far with those measures. Um, I think the furthest we got was with, together with Senator Mike Gabbard on Senate Bill two four two. We made it through the Senate, and, but that measure had died in the House. Um, Senator Wa was recently in Washington, DC. USDA was, were one of the departments that he had met with, um, moving forward. He will continue to work with the members in the federal level to see exactly what that means for Hawaii residents and what we can do on our end. So that's something that he is still working on and continuing to advocate for, um, for the members, for our locals and residents of Hawaii. Secondly, on a community level, we're still working on more Kahalua, but only because the Kahalua Waterways is probably one of the dirtiest waterways in the state, so it's, it's more of a pilot project in Kahalua that we're hopefully, if successful, is, are able to see it through, through Koalaua, Kona'ua, Ha'ula, um, all of our waterways, actually. With the Genki Ball project, we have made slow movement due to funding. But we've been working with several elementary school principals on that end, for elementaries, to be exact. And that project will be from August to January. Come January, hopefully, we'll have results, positive results, that'll hopefully be able to help us create legislation for the project to become a statewide pilot project, so that we can move further down north to Koalaua and then to the North Shore. Those are just a couple of things that we're working on. Besides that, I think that's all I have for this evening. Several constituent issues that we're working on. Putting up no parking signages in certain areas throughout the neighborhood. I think we've been working on with DOT on that one. Uh, I think that's it. This is from the top of my head. If there's any questions, if there's any concerns, I'll take back with me to Senator Wa.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions from board members? Present or online? Go ahead.
Sorry, I did have a comment, more of a comment, another question. This is Wila. Elizabeth.
Wila, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I just wanted to comment and make a note. I was driving home from work. I'm actually at a Hui Manu Elementary School this coming year. And, um, I was driving home recently, and I saw Senator Wa watering the ulu trees. You know, the project along the highway, and I didn't realize it was him until I kind of passed. Um, and then I realized it was him, so I just wanted to note that it was awesome for me to see him. I know that that was one of his projects. Um, to see him there watering the ulu tree that are doing well on the side of the road. And also, I've just been aware, I think, of Hui Manu Elementary is one of the schools that's going to be working on the, the Genki Falls project that you just talked about, and so I wasn't aware of what it was, but now that I know, um, yeah, I'm, I'm going to be a little bit more interested in, in seeing how we are able to do that as a school to support that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wila. Yes, um, unfortunately, right, Mother Nature, it just comes in its course. We're currently in summer, and, um, the food tree projects require a lot more water than, than they do during the hurricane season. Between, anywhere between November to April, which is kind of when we're in session. So during the summer, uh, we do have volunteers here and there, both in Haleiwa and in Kahalua. But in between, sometimes the food tree projects require watering, depending on how dry it will be, three, four, sometimes three, four, five times a week. So thank you for that. He is definitely out there, boots on the ground, hands on. With the Genki project, again, right, it was something that they did in the Alawai, so we kind of wanted to adopt it into the community. Ultimately, not only did we want to make it a full statewide pilot project, but we're hoping to not only drop Genki balls into the waterways, but hopefully pour the solution directly into the homes so that they can clean our seashells. Ultimately, making this a, a lot, a cheaper option than having to convert. Then having to convert, and so we're just trying to find options for our community members.
Thank you, thank you, Elizabeth. Appreciate it. Ben, did you have any? Okay, any other questions from the community? Okay, hearing none?
Do not.
Casey O'Connor, please.
Mahalo, just mahalo to the senator.
One minute.
For, um, supporting film and TV. Any possibility of getting tourism? Good statistics on the salaries for tourism is so low or diminishing returns, a carrying capacity study, or a new HTA board members that represent the community's impact by over tourism, unlike this area? Mahalo.
That's nothing.
Elizabeth?
Um, I don't have the answer for those, for those concerns or for any of those questions now. But I do have that, I have taken down your information. I'll look back on also on this video. Um, and then we'll be able to take that information to you, Casey.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mahalo.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hello. Uh, there, did you have a report on the Senate Bill uh, recognizing the coconut tree as a food source? That was Senate Bill fifteen eighty-two? I mean, did, surely that passed? I kind of wondered what, is that all it is, is a?
Unfortunately, Andrea, like you had mentioned, surely that passed. You would think so. It's Senator Wa, and he would tell you himself. He probably wishes to tell you himself that that was probably the, one of the least controversial bills that we had during the session, and unfortunately, in our opinion, due to political reasons, it died in the, in the House.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. Then I think if no more questions, then moving on. Appreciate it. Thanks for the report, Elizabeth. Um, let's move on to, um, back to Chelsea. Chelsea, have we figured out the sound?
Hi, I hope you guys can hear me.
There we go.
Perfect. I joined on a web browser, which I don't normally do, but I think that's, that's what was giving me issues, so. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations on the rules, and thank you for the work that you all continue to do, everyone who's in the meeting. I wish I could have been there in person. Um, I'll give my updates, uh, from, from our office. It will be brief. Um, I'm going to drop a couple of links into the chat. It has, um, Councilmember Wire's webpage on there. It also has our July newsletter, and in that newsletter, it, um, highlights some of the budget wins that came out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. And, um, just to highlight a few, um, in, for the area. Let me pull this up here. Apologies for the time here. Okay, so, um, just a couple to highlight in Koalaua, there was, um, monies for the, oopsie, sorry. My, I'm sorry, everyone. I'm having a couple of technical issues. My computer is lagging now. But in the link, and what you could do is, uh, go to Councilmember Wire's webpage. Um, if you scroll down, you'll see all of the newsletters. You'll see all of the neighborhood board newsletters, and then you'll see all of the, uh, district-wide newsletters, and there, um, it has a budget highlight section, and so you'll see all of the budget breakdowns, um, as well as sort of the different wins and the various parts of, uh, councilmembers district here. So just wanted to, to provide that update and give those resources. Um, if there's any other questions, um, I'm happy to bring it back to the team, but just wanted to provide those resources for you all, and apologies for the technical difficulties I'm having on my end.
It's fine, Chelsea. Thank you so much. And, uh, any questions from board members?
Hi, Chelsea. This is Dottie. I believe I asked this last, uh, two months ago. I'm very curious how the Sustainable Community Plan is now taken away from the boards in each of the districts. We used to look at that plan and make those decisions and recommendations on any changes in those plans. When I started this council work, that was what the council did. And other community members joined them. So when, when I want you to find out how that happened, that now the city council makes all those decisions, and we don't have any, any feedback in regard to that, that I know of. Can you find out that for that, about that for me? Because this is a really important issue to communities. Those sustainable community plans should be our plans and our rules. Please ask back what's going on.
Thank you. And just to clarify, you asked me two, um, two community meetings ago, but it was just, I think, uh, maybe last week at the Ha'ula Community Association. So I did take a look into it. I don't have all of the answers yet for you, though, but it sounds like the Department of Planning and Permitting have, has been putting the Sustainable Communities Plan out or the last few ones from their office, and so I wanted to just, um, ask for more clarity. Is, so with all of the previous documents, the Sustainable Communities Plan that has been put out by DPP, so the previous ones, there was collaboration with the community associations and the neighborhood boards, and, and now there's not one, because the last one I think that was published that I found on my end was twenty twenty. So just wanted to, um, make sure we're on the same page here.
Um, I, I, you mean, the last one that the community was involved in, or the last one that was passed?
The last one that was passed, and, um, I know for, I know you're not on the laptop right now, but just for transparency purposes, this is just the website that I'm looking at when, um, wh- when I'm kind of doing some of the research here on my end.
Well, I, somehow, you know, this just jumped out at me a year ago, and I, maybe it's when it came out from, um, the city, from the permitting and plant, which, the commission? Is it who, who does it now? The commission?
It looks like it's DPP, and.
Department of Permitting and Planning does that?
Yes, um, that's, this is the Sustainable Communities Plan.
Find out how that happened. Please find out who made that decision. We object. Do we object to that? Yes, we object to that. This is something we used to have significant input into.
And I would like to echo Dottie's concern. I think not having the community input is a dangerous precedent. It's a disconnect, and people who are making decisions may not necessarily know the details and the issues and the challenges and the unique background, um, of our communities, and so it is critical that the community has input in this process. And that that should be changed if
the pressure.
If the community was, um, taken out of that process.
Thank you. Uh, Chelsea, if you just wouldn't mind reporting back next time, in terms of the community role and that.
That's, that's totally fine. I, offline, though, offline, though, I might just ask up for just some more, some more documents and resources, because I'm, I'm not entirely sure if we're talking about the same document still, so if, um, if that's all right with the board, I'll, I'll reach out to and follow up with Auntie Dottie and Sunny here.
That sounds good. Um, Andrea, did you raise your hand? Thank you, Chelsea.
Yes, I did. I'm asking about, uh, the burial council report for the Turtle Bay area development they're trying to put in with a REIT. And I noticed that at city council, that's being pushed forward. I want to know if, I want to encourage our representative to realize that a lot of people fought for years, even under the, uh, passing of the Sustainable Communities Plan, for example. We're trying to change, you know, have our input in it. That the, uh, the burial council and the city council seem to be in control. And no community inputs getting to stop it. I, I want our representative to represent us a large portion, you know, because it was put in before not to have extra development there, extra development at Turtle Bay because of the extra population and the extra traffic, et cetera. And now there's this big development going in there, and there's another big development trying to go through with, uh, by the Joseph Peleong uh, in Haleiwa area.
Okay, sorry, Andrea, what's, so what's the question?
Is, is he trying to stop these things? I didn't, I didn't see him trying to stop the developments. Is he, is, is he working actively to trying to stop the development and have them require a new, uh, SEIS or not? Because the things have changed. You know, twenty eleven was the last, um, Sustainable Community Plan update. But they're adding all these things now that should not have been added, basically. The, the population and all that being added to just that one area there by Turtle Bay.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Uh, Dottie, were you gonna?
I was just going to say, Andrea, that, um, my understanding, Chelsea might, uh, correct me, but I believe I saw a report today that Matt was the only person that voted against that in, in the city council.
Oh, good.
Is that right, Chelsea?
Yes, yeah. Oh, okay, yes, that is correct. That is correct. Thank you. Yeah.
We did put in some comments about it and send them to Matt, and he voted against it. So, um, it's. What is the, the, what is the project called? It's?
Um, it's known as the Backyards Bill, and it's, um, it was attempting to rezone a district in, um, the North Shore Haleiwa.
Yeah, that's agriculture to urban, but this is also, that's, that's Haleiwa. But we also have the one here at Turtle Bay. Where, you know, how come all of a sudden they're allowed to build, you know, so many more units there?
So Chelsea, if, if you could, you could let us know Matt's strategy or disposition.
Yeah, I think what Andrea is saying is that the Sustainable Communities Plan advised against further development, and so I think Andrea is asking if that was a recommendation, can development happen contrary to what was recommended in the Sustainable Communities Plan? Is that right?
Yes, that's pretty close.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Any other? That's one last question here, and then we'll go on.
Yeah, is it mine or some?
Evelyn, go ahead.
Um, hi, Chelsea. It's Evelyn. I'm, I'm asking if there's some help we can get for our community in Kohuku for some infrastructure in the business district. Because we have a lot. Because we have a lot of expanding. We have a lot of expansion going on over there, but we don't have more fire hydrants, more water, more fire hydrants, more sewage and all that. So we need some support from the city, county, state to help us, you know, develop it in a safe way for the whole community.
Okay, thank you.
Specifically according to the sugar mill development?
Okay. Sugar mill development. Okay, got it.
And then we have one more hand up. I don't know who, who is that? Casey Connor?
Yeah. Thanks, Chelsea. Is Matt still the Chair of the Energy, Environment and Sustainability Committee? Again, I had asked the city several times, how high could a close-in tsunami be? Because it was supposed to be able to reach us in 20 to 30 minutes. And I didn't know if they're looking at this, how large the tsunami was in 1946. And if with climate change, I thought that was supposed to be even bigger and with erosion even further in. And I didn't know if anyone was looking at that and could look at it for our side to make sure that we don't have a terrible disaster. Mahalo.
Sorry, can, can you repeat or, or could you repeat the question again, Casey? I don't think I caught it clearly. Or could you put it into the chat, please? Thank you. Thank you.
I'll try. The chat has been not working for me. Put a couple of things in and sorry, it's not working. Just quickly, the, I had asked the mayor's office several times on how quick a close-in, how high a close-in tsunami could be. A close-in tsunami is supposed to be able to reach us in 20 to 30 minutes. So what is their estimates of how high? In 1946, there was a huge tsunami up the Ko'olalua coast. It was very sparsely populated and several people died. Others can tell you more about that. Some areas like Kahuku, they said it was as high as 26 feet. Since it looks to me like Matt is still the Chair of the Environmental and Sustainability Committee. Is it possible to know if they have looked, reevaluated the tsunami threat for this area? High? And since all the erosion, how far it will come in now? Mahalo.
You get that, Chelsea?
Did you hear that?
I think, I think so. Yeah, there are multiple parts to it, multiple parts to it. I'm doing my best here to.
I'll, I'll email you, Chelsea. Thank you. It's just after the terrible thing in Texas, we want to make sure everyone's safe. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chelsea. Thank you for everyone who's reported. Let's move on in the agenda here. We have an SMA presentation. Mark Howland, are you online? Mark, you've got five minutes. Okay. So moving on to our committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay.
Quick update for Parks and Rec. We just had, for Kukutia Park, we had our meeting for the pool and the cover play court last month. And we received community input. We are going to have another community meeting September, but we'll make the announcement to fine tune the design even further. We did have a, a meeting for the Kahuku Shared Use Path in April. And so that's moving forward with the designing and the planning, but we should have more meetings coming forward too as well. And so we're excited for community involvement and input in this, in the planning process.
Thank you, Sunny.
Sunny, Sunny, sorry, this is, we have a question.
Oh, we, go ahead.
I, sorry, do you know the date of the September meeting? I wasn't aware of the last one, so I missed it. And I've been trying to keep, keep up to date with, with it. Do you know when the meeting is in September?
It's not scheduled yet, but that was the month that they tentatively announced. So as soon as they hear back, I'll announce it on the Ko'olalua Neighbor Board and on various platforms.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelly, Angela, Kelly.
This is just one of cultural and arts. We are going to be having, starting next month on the first Wednesday and third Wednesday, we'll be having in the Olelo Hawaii language at the Marriott. And it's open to our mokus, Ko'olalua. And so we wanted to make sure that we were going to be making flyers and put it out there on the highway. It's going to start at 6:00 PM. It's going to be at the Marriott in the conference room. And we would like to, it's going to be basic Hawaiian language. And it's going to be to everyone who wants to come and take. Now, we're not offering it to the children because we know that most of them, Wa'ha'ula has the language. And so we're opening it up to kupuna, you know, anybody that's, that's wanting to learn Hawaiian language. We want to make sure that we get the message out to them. And there's no charge. Now, now someone said, oh, we're going to have a books. No, we're not. It's going to be basic. They talk, we answer. They talk, we answer. It's going to be done in the way that they're, they're being taught. Like for us who grew up with our grandparents who taught the language and that's how they're going to try that. So we just want to make that available. First and third Wednesday. Because on the, then we also have the Ma'keke on the second and fourth Wednesday. And we also have the Talk Story. And so the Talk Story has been going very well. And it's, it's really a talk story. So we just, I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, we can, I'm going to be sending flyers to all the community associations and the Hawaii Civic Club of Ko'olalua and to others. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions for our Chair of Cultural and Arts, Kelly? Okay, Dottie, did you have a report?
Yeah, I just want to make a brief report on the Community Resilience Emergency Preparedness Committee. For those that don't know, we have lost quite a bit of federal funding. We had already been awarded two federal earmarks, which was over $10 million. Half of that's been taken away. So in order to work through this, we have decided to change the building and start with a smaller building that will be a community safe room. It will serve primarily as a community safe room because we think that's the most, this is the largest priority that we have. And it will be a building where we can add a second floor. And we will plan to add additional community safe room space on the second floor as well as services. So this is a change and our designers are rolling with it. Our planners are rolling with it. We're working through the HUD details of getting a NEPA done. We hope to get the final design and permitting by next year. And then start the, the building, the horizontal development and building the following year. So we have close to 18 million right now that we think will get us through that part, at least the horizontal and the first floor of the building. So, and we are going for future earmarks. We're still in touch with the SHOTS office in Hirono and Takuta. And so we're, there are other funding mechanisms coming along that we believe will be available in this coming year. We're also working with the Punahaloo community to put in a grant to build a microgrid system for emergency power. And Hiko is a partner in this and we're working together to create a model for our small rural vulnerable communities so that we will have an option of power when the power is off for up to 30 days or more. So this is exciting. The grant application goes in the end of this month. We're very helpful. This is a Department of Energy grant. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our Community Resilience and Emergency Preparedness Chair? Okay, do we have any other committees wanting to report? There being none, let's go to public input and announcements. Do we have any public input and announcements? Chris?
I'm, I'm Chris. I'm with the Lahui Okolalua Canoe Club. We paddle out of Kahana Bay. Dr. Chang, Sunny, Pastor Cheese, somebody to do as well. Exciting announcement is that we're working on building a outrigger canoe shelter to protect our canoes. We got some new canoes in and also to protect our kapuna and keke who paddle as well. And we have terrific support from our elected representatives, which is really gratifying. And we've spoken to Ho'ola, the Kahana Association, also Punahaloo Association. And our representatives have requested that we circulate a petition among the neighborhood board and in all the community associations so that they have ammunition that they can use when they advocate on our behalf. So tonight I have a couple petitions that I'd like to pass around if you're interested in signing them. We'd love that. And I also appreciate the opportunity at some point to talk to your own individual boards. I haven't spoken to Lahia or Kahuku yet as well, or Kahana. I'll be around afterwards to answer any questions you may have. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements from folks who are here present?
To comment or maybe make a formal request if you can come and present at our next board. That way, and then request for the board support. That way we can have it official. Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if you just let me know when it is and put me on the agenda, I'm happy to do a presentation.
So yeah, talk with Chair.
Any other comments from people?
So I've been paddling for three years with Lahui. And three years ago, they were just coming off COVID and just starting up. And since then, the club has exponentially expanded. And, you know, there's about 180 to 100 keke paddlers that show up to practice now. And we started from like three canoes. Now we have like a whole bunch. And so I personally have seen how it benefited the community, the families, the keke, even the adults with, with the sense of belonging, the community, the physical fitness and the cultural exchange. So anyways, I just wanted to thank Lahui for providing that important resource, cultural and, you know, resource to our community.
I just wanted to let them know that Kahana Community Association, of course, we support you. And you're representing all of Ko'olalua, right? And so we should all be supporter of our only canoe club. Mahalo.
Thank you. And do we have any, Chris online? Do you have an announcement?
Yes, I'm from Hawaii Vice Gaming League. I just wanted to throw out an announcement saying that the Honolulu Century Ride will be happening Sunday, September 28th. It'll be starting in town at Kapalani Regional Park and going up to Swansea Beach Park and back. We have multiple other turnaround points earlier in the route. But yeah, our yearly ride, it's the 42nd, I believe, annual event for us. But just throwing it out there, giving you guys a heads up.
Thank you, Chris, Sunny.
I'll put the website and my email address in the chat in case anyone has any other questions or I could take them now if there's any.
Do we have any questions for Chris? Okay, do we have any other announcements? Evelyn, do you have an announcement?
I just want to announce that July 30th at Leihua High School, there'll be a joint neighborhood board meeting for, to support not having a gondola on Mount Kahala. So anybody wants to go?
Where is Leihua?
Wahewa High School. I'm sorry. Pardon me for making that.
Leihua. Okay, got it.
What's the date again, Evelyn?
I think she said July 30th.
July 30th. Okay. All right. Moving, Dottie has an announcement.
I have two announcements. One is for, from DLNR, the great team that's been coming out to work on getting rid of the little red fire ants. They're going to start spraying using a drone high up in the mountains in July 25th, that weekend. And so they wanted to let everyone know, if you have questions, you can call DLNR, Ryan Chang about that. But it's going to be, they're also going to be focusing on our Manuila He'al. It's had a terrible infestation there, the worst in, in this part of the island, I believe. And so there's two days, the 25th and the 28th are the main days that they'll be doing that. And then I also want to tell you that we've been working with the broadband Hui in, in town with the city and the state at University of Hawaii. And they're going to have a broadband hoike, a celebration about broadband. And we got them to come out to rural areas this time to share that celebration across the whole island. So it is a statewide celebration. They're going to, in the morning of October 6th, I don't know if you brought your calendar with you. We are going to be serving a breakfast here and a lunch and have a presentation from all the Ko'olalua communities. I've been reaching out and I just wanted to announce this now. If, if you think you should be on our panel of presenters, I know Dr. Chang's sitting back there and I'm challenging her to be on there to talk about telehealth and what they're doing at the library. So Tamara King is coming to present on that. We have representatives from our elementary schools and the high school coming to talk about what's going on there. We're going to be talking about our kapuna tech program here and the new programs we hope to start. So it's going to be an opportunity to share the good and the bad and the ugly about broadband and digital technology. So I hope you mark that morning, October 6th on your calendar. We're going to be hosting that here with the city and others from around the state. All, as I said, all the counties are participating. So they are taking a field trip to Ha'ula. Okay. Oh, what time is it? It starts, the breakfast starts in the morning at 8:30. And this goes till, I think it goes till noon, noon. I'll get a flyer out. We'll put that on our website and I'll bring you updates and future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Do we have any other announcements or community input? Okay, approval of the regular minutes. Do we have an emotion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Ben. Do we have a?
Fortunately, we approved the, what, last month's meeting?
That's right.
Me, me is a minutes.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All right, okay, awesome. And then our next meeting, it's Thursday, August 14th, for now here. And we will see you all next month. Oh, go ahead.
I'll get, oh, I'm sorry. Renee Fonoimona. I heard this gentleman ask about how to get on the agenda and I didn't hear an explanation. So I just want for clarity, how does someone get on the neighborhood board agenda so that it's clear?
All you just have to do is just send a request over to Mike and he could just put on the agenda.
Can you provide the email that I should send it to or the details?
The emails, all your emails will be on our website at the Neighborhood Commission Office. Oh, yes.
Do I give out my personal email?
Oh, no. We have the, the email that you allow us to use.
Okay, okay. That's fine. All right, then I believe the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. All right, then I believe the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.